Good evening. To bring the meeting to order, it is April 13th, 2015, in the upper school committee. I'd like to thank Miss Molly and the faculty staff, students, and our organization for inviting us here tonight. I think we might have invited ourselves to come too, but thank you for having us and hosting. Before we begin, I know you guys have a presentation, but I just wanted to bring up something I saw on the transcript last Thursday on page. That I found a little disturbing. This is the first thing I saw when I picked up the transcript on Thursday morning.
As L M K said, "I was above the fold."
I am above, and somehow I wish you weren't. And I see why you... Is the pic here or did you bring the thing in?
We brought the pic in.
You brought the pic just for this?
I know it's hip for another reason.
Okay. I just wanted to put that up. That was interesting. This time, of course, what we're doing in all of our meetings is asking if there's any input, public input from the audience. If there is and you want to be recognized, ask the question, write a comment, raise your hand, and you'll have the floor. Okay? And if not, we'll move right to Miss Molly. Oh, sorry, student report. That's right. Thank you. This is Jensen Kea-Tom Martin, or something like that. No, it's Jensen. Jensen, floor your hands.
So, for honorable athletic matters, we have very important editing from April 10, and the fourth part will be mailed out by the end of this week. And the LA MCATs and mathematics part exams ended March. For honorable fine arts matters, this year the race was held on April 2nd. The winners won the prize between Auntie and Jason Canyon. Now the participants included Dick Selfridge, like you see on that window, Brown, and Ed. Junior prom was held on April 10th during March started at 7:00 PM, followed by three nights for everyone that went. And the art show was held on Thursday, April 9th. The all-time chorus show was held on Thursday, April 9th. And the all-time band concert was held on April 14th. For honorable athletic matters, despite all the lunatic challenges, sports are a whole swing. Girls across the Georgia Valley won their first game, and they lost their first game on the tour on Thursday, April 9th. And baseball, Kentucky created one Saturday. And softball, football opener was here at Little School. And tennis, we called it last week, and we'll be playing them again today. Students and staff also wore their red socks here to support the red socks opener, which was on the red floor. Scant brassos, world colleges, religious class doing research, action project, in order to help accomplish their collective identification, such as backpacks, blankets, travel sets, includes gear, books, gloves, hats, scarves, etc. And they will deliver them to a shelter in Maine. And student council is also hosting a regional conference with the Christian College Student Council in North Forks, Virginia. And softball, William Madden is running for the UMass West West End. And a trip to Europe, where many students and staff leave on Thursday, has explored areas to experience, sort of, for the others. And the HTE exams will be starting in the first week's May. And there is also free administration incentive for students to talk to today and see here tomorrow. And future students will have the A and S type classes starting in August. For my student work report, I brought a lot of court editing. And it was experiments, compare metals, find out which we had to more than others. So we had solid metals, copper metals, so for example, copper and silver nitrate. We have mixed together, and we can see that there's a reaction, which shows that copper is, goes for stronger than silver. It also led us further, so it's a town's equations.
Excellent. Thank you, Jensen. Any questions from the committee? Comments? Jensen's a member of the class of 2017, and every school committee we have a representative here to give the student report, solid bird, long. Anything? John, anything else?
Oh, just a nice job, Jensen. Jensen, that's a great answer.
Thank you. Thank you for coming over to Little School. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Jensen, I hope you're good. Okay. You got a good grade on the test. I expected a pass on that. Okay, thank you. I think now we move to Miss Molly.
Thank you for being here. We have a full team coming in every year. Tonight we have a number of... We have a variety show for you tonight. We're going to start with a couple of us, science fair project. We have an annual science fair which took place last Tuesday, I believe. This year, for the first time, it's only the fifth grade, usually the fourth and fifth grade, but we decided that we were going to concentrate our fourth graders on learning more about the scientific method, spending a year really getting into know-how and learning all about the scientific method. And then having the fifth graders do the science fair. So tonight, we have two of the best projects of the day. And then we're going to entertain you with a little bit of technology that's really been quite a project for us this year. A lot of the... Every class in the building has been involved in the creation of some books on the iPad. And they've been illustrated by the children, you'll hear the children's voices. And then our final piece of the show tonight will be a little sneak peek view as to our drama production that's coming up in June, Beauty and the Beast. So we'll have a very small sneak peek for you. Obviously, they have a couple of months left to rehearse for this show, but we have a member of the student here tonight to give you a little taste, so maybe you'll decide to come and join us on June 19th and 20th at the Forman High Center High School.
That's great.
So, and I have provided you a little bit of a program here, and some of the children's... All of the children's names that were involved in the creation of the book and the science fair, and those that will be entertaining us with their singing tonight are listed inside the program. So before I get started, I'd like to just thank everybody for being here, members of the staff that are here, members of the school council. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I appreciate you being here. So, Shivani, do I come up? And Zach, come on up. So, we'll start with Shivani. Shivani Tricamp, how well do disinfectants work? Okay, get away, Shivani.
Hi, I'm Maggie Shewy. I did my project on how well disinfectants work. I chose this project because I love orchids, but I've never known bacteria before, and I thought it would be really cool to be in something that's so small, but it's actually long. But I've tried to figure out, if this experiment was wish disinfectants were the best to clean the surface of the dirty cutting board. I thought that 70% alcohol would clean it the best, compared to 10% bleach, lice salt, pine salt, antibacterial soap, control water, because when you go to the doctor, they don't swab you with Pine Salt and Pine Salt, they swab you with alcohol. What I did to conduct this experiment is I divided the cutting board into six portions, and I put the load all over the cutting board. Then I let that air out overnight.
What did you put on that?
Baloney.
A log?
Then I let that air out overnight. Then I put a disparate disinfectant on each of the portions to clean the area of the cutting board. After I let that dry out, I swabs each portion onto this loading plate, and I put that in an incubator to go for three days. This is a picture of the incubator that I made, and I made it with an incubator, because since it's cooled out, the type of surface bacteria I was growing threw rest close to even body temperature, ninety to 100 degrees Fahrenheit. After I took the agar plate to add to the incubator, that's a picture of colonies. But after I counted and compared the colonies, I figured out that my hypothesis that 70% alcohol would clean the surface of the dirty cutting board best was actually false, and that antibacterial soap cleaned the cutting board the best with no colonies of bacteria at all. And even more surprising was that 10% bleach cleaned the board with over 60 colonies of bacteria. While we had just six colonies, but they were the biggest in size, which is why I have the average relative size ratio of a colony. And pine salt, lice salt, and 70% alcohol all just had one colony of bacteria. Something that might have affected my results was that when I was spreading the antibacterial soap on its portion, I noticed it was a lot thicker than the other disinfectant. It might have left thin film of antibacterial soap on its area, and I better swab that onto the agar plate instead of the surface bacteria it was supposed to clean. Something that I learned is that agar actually is made of renic acid, which I would never guess, because it's actually clear. This board shows one of the bacterial colonies I grew in agar. And since I have a microscope at home, I put one of the bacterial colonies onto the microscope, and I put it under the microscope. And my microscope can take pictures, so this is some of the bacterial colonies I grew and I really like this project because I learned a lot about bacteria that I didn't know before, and I thought it was really cool. Thank you for listening to my project.
That was excellent. I thought the start was great, but the presentation was excellent. It really was a great job, not looking at a single mold on anything else to work. Perfect job. I have a question. So you probably didn't use this, because you wouldn't use it to wash the surface. But you tried on the opinion sanitizer, like you didn't try them. So I'm wondering, because everybody says that that really cleans your hands well, but I was wondering how well that works. So maybe you could, oh, you'll be here next year.
Did you decide to get out of here? What was it? Just get out of here. All right, go ahead. Any other questions? Excellent job.
So next, we have Zach Heinz, and his project is called Spread the Soap, Not the Germs. Get away, Zach.
Hi, I'm Zach Heinz. My project is Spread the Soap, Not the Germs. The question is to find out which part of the hand is most difficult to wash germs off. My hypothesis was that the hardest part will be around the fingernails, from the pier to the palm, back of the hand, fingers hanging between the fingers. Today's experiment, please. A nickel-sized amount of the solution-based semerated germs washed your hands with soap and water for 20 seconds, ensuring to alter that light on to your hand to see if there are any germs. The research in this project is to find out that keeping hands clean is one of the most important steps we can do from stopping germs and other diseases spreading from one person to the other. My hat, tie, sock, and for my sister, dad, mom, me, and my mother, after doing the project, I found out that my hat, tie, sock, and all had germs going around on their hands. You can learn a lot from this experiment, such as germs. They're the hardest part to wash off one hand. So not only do you have to wash the palm, back of the hand, you also have to get the fingers between and around the fingernails, as shown in the data. Our materials for this is the glow gel mini kit, which you can get on Amazon, the long tails, the minimum of five, the solution-based semerated germs, a lot of that, we've all kind of seen with running water and soap.
Thank you. Thank you, Shewy. Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
I am. Yeah. So when you put that light on, did it show?
It kind of highlighted little specks all around my hands.
Like, does it stand?
Yeah, it tried to do it in the dark, and it rose, and it sealed up the germs. It sealed all the germs better.
Okay. Thank you.
Now we're going to ask you if you wouldn't mind coming sit in the front row, so they can face you that way? Okay, so the progressive story project, and it was a project that involved every single all worked together to create four different stories. It started by the preschoolers, and then it went on to different classes. You guys see just one of the four stories today. Students choose the school iPad as well as the Co-Creator app to create the YouTube video. Are you going to sing? And that's Mrs. McGuire who's speaking. She is a library professional, also has been really working with the children quite a lot with Helen Kelly, a digital learning specialist, doing a lot of work for children on the iPad. So. Taitron did the music, and Ms. Devese did the illustration. I say, did they help the children, they explain how to do it, but your students did all the work. You're going to sing.
Wait, five, this is Meschel's Pea, Pea. This is Aldous. This is Dees. This is Brennan, and this is Bedavis's classes. The Adventures of Scout for the New Georgians is an aggressive story. It was studied by preschoolers in Mrs. Meschel's Pea class, and added to by Mrs. Aldous Kinney Robins, who was passed on to Mrs. Dees' fourth graders, next over to Mrs. Brennan's second grade class, and was brought to the exciting conclusion by Mrs. Bedavis's fifth graders. Each student in the class had a voice of the illustration of the story. Enjoy.
I loved to tell you this story. Once upon a time, there was a chicken named Scout. She had a red comb on her head, red chin, yellow feet, and yellow feet. Her feathers were brown, and her wings helped her to fly. She lived on the farm with horses, chickens, pigs, sheep, cows, and human farmers. One day, she was flying to the store to buy bread, went off the way. It started to rain, and Scout got all wet. She couldn't fly, and Scout fell into a river and was headed towards a waterfall. Floody the Frog saw what was happening and said to Scout, "I'll save you." Floody collected all the lily heads and made a bridge. Scout climbed onto the bridge and quickly walked to shore. Suddenly, Georgie the Duck came up to Scout with a towel to dry her hair. Scout looked around and didn't see anything familiar. She was lost. Scout was in a deep, dark, scary forest. She didn't know how she got there, but her friends Floody and Georgie were there with her. Scout was feeling extremely nervous. She wanted to home. They spied the yellow gold pipe that they discovered. All of a sudden, they came through a gate that needed a secret code to open. It was a mountain with silver and gold on top. It was so tall, it reached to the sky. As they were looking astonished, they heard a roar. It was Scout's stomach. They were so hungry, they heard footsteps on the same side of the gate that they were. There was a chicken holding a code. The code is one, two, three. Of course it is. Not simple. They went through the gates, there a glowing light, seven knights with shining armor and hearts lit, and said that they could help them get home, but first they had to do a favor. Scout, a little Georgie, that was helping Scout, asked her to get home. Suddenly, Scout's stomach riled up. The knight said, "What was that?" It was Scout's stomach, cried Floody and Georgie. The knights invited them back to the castle to get something to eat. While they were feasting on shrimp, bugs, and eggs, the knights burst through the door to tell them about their machine. They explained that they needed the three friends to help them get the golden key that unlocked their stable. If they could get into the stable, they could see their horses and see Scout and have fun Scout, from Georgie, started climbing up the enormous gate. It was so tall, they couldn't see the top. It was hard work, but they climbed and climbed. Floody was the fastest climber. When Floody finally reached the top, he couldn't believe his eyes. There, at the top of the clouds, stood an enormous weighty unicorn. Hanging around the beautiful creature's neck was the golden key. When Scout, when Georgie, and Scout came hopping and popping behind him, they stood in awe too. Scout managed to squeak out, "What's going on there?" Boom, a lightning breaks a hole in the ceiling of the barn, raining poured on Scout's head. Scout wakes up from her nightmare. The barn animals gathered together in a dark barn. Scout creeps over and tells the barn man about her endless nightmare. Scout's story was told for many generations, and the story changed every time a new animal told it. The end.
Mrs. Shaw's class, kindergarten, Mrs. Ball, kindergarten, Mrs. Dees, fourth grade, Mrs. Brennan, second grade, and Mrs. Bedavis's fifth grade. We have variety readers, illustrators, curriculum readers. Nice job, Mrs. McGuire. Those of the students, they did all the technical work too. I mean, we showed them how to do it, and they did it, so thank you. And of course, it was a paper story.
Your presentations are stunning.
I know. Everything's clean. Appreciate it. You had a real... It's not happening. You didn't see it for a moment.
Zero. That's a bad idea. I'm going to choose one of the new high schools. Do you have any new screen for the last school? We're definitely going to need one. Chris, pleased to see you, bud.
Oh, I can go.
Before we go, yes.
Twenty-seven? You know that by twenty-seven?
Oh, there you go.
Because always some kind of a technical.
Chris, our...
Thank you, Mrs. Angel.
Good evening. The Little School Drama Club was established in 2007 to help support the music program and to be a real theater experience to the students at Little School. The club is at the show every two years and is open to court and the bright stars. We are proud to have over 250 alumni from five-year-olds shows. Many of whom have gone on to perform in the middle school, high school, and college. This year, we are excited to perform Disney's Beauty and the Beast, and are even more excited to present the show at our new Performing Arts Center at the North Reading High School. We have rehearsed three times a week since February. Sometimes we rehearse in small groups, other times we rehearse in larger groups, bar ball cast. The focus includes both vocal rehearsals and acting rehearsals. Tonight, we would like to share a tiny snippet of our show with you, in hopes that it will mark your calendars and join us on June 19th or 20th in the Performing Arts Center.
So, with this with deepness, pride, and the greatest pleasure, that you're welcome each night. And now, we invite you to relax. Let us pull up the chair as the Drama Club proudly presents Beauty and the Beast.
I'm Rory, and I'm Belle's father. I am the beast.
I'm Momia, the candlestick.
I'm Cogsworth, the clock.
And Belle.
So be our guest.
Couldn't keep quiet, just had to invite you to stay. I was trying to be hospitable. Rubbish. Ah, Patrick, you blamed me for trying to maintain what's left of argument. Look, it's us. Look, it's you. What about me? Oh, bye. If the master doesn't break the spell, slowly try sharing. We will all become things.
Hold on, Momia. We've got to hold on.
Hello? Is anyone there? Hello?
It's a girl! This is the one, the girl I've waited for. She's come to break the spell.
Wait a minute. Let's not be hasty. Hello? Is anyone there? Please, I'm looking for my father.
Belle, is that you?
Help her!
How did you find me?
Your hands are like ice. Who has done this to you?
Belle, you must leave this place.
I won't leave you here. Who's there? I know someone's there. Who are you?
The master of this castle. And you're the one responsible for this. Release my father at once.
I do not take orders from anyone. Get out. No, wait. Forgive me. Please, let him out. Can't you see he's no Belle?
And he shouldn't trespass you.
But he is an old man. He could die.
There's nothing you can do.
Wait. Please, take him instead.
No, Belle, you don't know what you're doing. Do that, but it takes place.
If I did, would you ever know?
Yes, but you must promise to stay forever.
No. How much will it hurt?
Belle, listen to me. I'm old. I've lived my life.
Have my word done?
Take him to the village.
Wait, no, not yet.
Let her go. Let her go.
No, no. I'll never see him again, and I didn't even get to say goodbye.
Master, since the girl is willing to be with us for quite some time now, you might try to offer her a part of our performance. Um, she'll get to your room. You follow me. This is your home now. You're free to go anywhere you like, except the west wing.
Why? What's in the west?
It's forbidden for everyone to set foot up there. Do you understand?
Yes.
This is your room. If you need anything, my service will attend, and one of our things will join you for dinner. That is not a request.
and to be a real theater experience to the students at the Little School. The club has got the show every two years and is open to court and the great students. We are proud to have over 250 alumni from five different shows. Many of whom have gone on to perform in the middle school, high school, and college. This year, we are excited to perform Disney's Beauty and the Beast and are even more excited to present the show at our new Performing Arts Center at the North Reading High School. We have rehearsed three times a week since February. Sometimes we rehearse in small groups. Other times, we rehearse in larger groups or the past. The focus includes both vocal rehearsals and acting rehearsals. Tonight, we would like to share a tiny snippet of our show with you in hopes that it will mark your calendars and join us on June 19th or 20th in the Performing Arts Center.
So, with this with deepness pride and the greatest pleasure that you're welcome each night. And now, we invite you to relax. Let us pull up your chair as the Drama Club proudly presents Beauty and the Beast.
I'm Rory, and I'm Belle's father. I am the beast.
I'm Mami, and I can't else say.
I'm Cogsworth the clock. And Belle. So be our guest.
Couldn't keep quiet, just had to invite you to stay. I was trying to be hospitable. Rubbish. Ah, Patrick. You blamed me for trying to maintain what's left of our humanity. Look at us. Look at you. What about me? Oh, bye. If the master doesn't break the spell, slowly try sharing. We will all become things.
Hold on, Mami, we've got to hold on. Hello? Is anyone there? Hello?
It's a girl! This is the one, the girl we've been waiting for. She's come to break the spell.
Wait a minute, let's not be hasty. Hello? Is anyone there? Please, I'm looking for my father.
Belle, is that you?
Papa!
How did you find me?
Your hands are like ice. Who has done this to you?
Belle, you must leave this place.
I won't leave you here. Who's there? I know someone's there. Who are you?
The master of this castle. You're the one who's responsible for this. Release my father at once. I do not take orders from anyone. Get out.
No, wait. Forgive me. Please, let him out. Can't you see he's no Belle?
And he shouldn't trespass you.
But he's an old man. He could die.
There's nothing you can do.
Wait. Please, take him instead.
No, Belle, you don't know what you're doing. Do that, but it takes place.
If I did, would you ever know?
Yes, but you must promise to stay forever.
No. How much will it cost?
Belle, listen to me. I'm old. I've lived my life.
Have my word done?
Take him to the village.
Wait, no, not yet.
Let her go, let her go. No, no!
I'll never see him again. And I didn't even get to say goodbye.
Master, since the girl is willing to be with us for quite some time now, you might want to offer her a part of our performance. Um, she'll get to your room. You follow me. This is your home now. You're free to go anywhere you like, except the west way.
Why? What's in the west way?
It's forbidden. We're not going to set foot up there. Do you understand?
Yes.
This is your room. If you need anything, my services will attend. And one other thing, we'll join you for dinner. That is not a request.
Yes, I made the choice. Papa, I will stay. But I don't deserve to lose my freedom in this way, you monster. If you think that what you've done is right, well then, you're a fool. Think again. Is this home? Is this where I should learn to be happy? Never dreamed that a home could be dark and cold. I was told every day in my childhood, even when we grow old. Home should be where the heart is. Never a word so true. My heart's far, far away. Home is true. What I give to return to the life that I knew lately. And to me, I complete a mental provincial town. Is this home? Am I here for day or forever? Shut away from the world that the who knows when. Oh, but then, as my life has been altered once, it can change again. Little tighter walls around me change every look at me. Nothing lasts, nothing holds all of me. My heart's far, far away. Home is true.
So, we have Jack Foley, Kenny McQuallen, Stephen Flory, Erica Papa, Lucy Keller. And a nice round of applause also for Mrs. Pedro. And for Mrs. Rizzotti, who helps with the As you can see, a lot of work has gone in so far. And we're expecting it to be a fabulous production, so please consider joining us in 2019. And there's one person I'd like to introduce tonight, and that's Mrs. O'Ryan, a fifth-grade science teacher. One hundred percent solely responsible for prepping the kids and getting their projects where they need to be for the science. So thank you, Florian. And that concludes our open studio session.
I just want to say that as a little school parent, my kids are all gone, waiting on the mat. But I'm sure that fourth-grade parents are very appreciative that we now live in science here in the fifth grade.
I love the science here. Two years, two kids.
And he took that into consideration.
And I also want to say something too. I know, last week, there was a letter in the paper to transfer the most amount to the bombing hot center. Let me tell you something. If you have a chance to go on June 19th or 20th, because that place is spectacular. What I just saw, they don't line up that stage. We've been to the Young Americans. We've been to Wizard of Oz. We've been to Peter Pan. Absolute
All-time forest.
Exactly. All-time forest. And so if there's a glitch here and there, we have warned you. And I'll believe you when you get there and you see it. If you haven't been there, go. You're gonna love it. These kids get up on that stage. And it's a bright future because we've had some out-of-this-world productions this year. So, and again, thank you very much, Mrs. Molly, and the Little School parents and students. It was great coming here. We always look forward to the music production because we come to Little School.
Are you a schmuck?
Hi, hello.
The other side of the back. We have the actual agenda. We have the two new resources, the PSSC, which is the update of our update of our program. I use the chairman. So I did a tour of the new middle school, construction of the middle school last week. Mr. Hoddig took that, Dr. Daley, and Mr. Molly and I. It was the first time, I think the first time you in Dr. Daley went through my It's been a while since I've been through one. The, or something along the side on Saturday. The progress really is remarkable. It's coming along nicely. So, just a few bullet points for you, some updates and things of note. I'm sure you've noticed that the trail trails have been relocated. Construction trailers, office trailers have been relocated from the Lockwood's property site. They move toward the eventual construction of the future tennis courts. The site work has resumed in earnest west of the main entrance at Building C. Granite Curving, Granite Curving has been delivered a week ago today. The installation has begun on that. It occurs out of the high school today. Quite a bit of work has been done to install the curving on the middle school to eventually get the drop-off circle. Building E, the second story, has progressed to the point where ceiling grids are in place and many lights and electric fixtures have been installed. Building E, first story, has wallboard out taped. I mean, I was pleased last week to see that some painting in classrooms had been done. A portion of the building at the perimeter classrooms have been wallboarded and taped as well. The roof has been completely buttoned up. It continues toward, almost toward one hundred percent completion with some of the detail issues associated with the roofing of the building and particularly at and around the fair story structure taking place presently. All rooftop hair handling units have been installed. The exterior window installation is essentially covered. And any further comments or thoughts? I'll, it pretty well sums it up. So moving at that great rate of speed, it's mainly going faster than the last one. Who said reality?
I'm Belle, I have been through many, many months though.
The time is still looks like it. What I think that is, you don't get the grand spaces like you have at the high school with major shared facilities, but the amount of space is incredible in that school. And the science labs, both the sixth grade, which you know said part of that sixth grade academy, and then the seventh, eighth grade science lab are just unbelievable. The space is incredible.
Yeah, I think I could say that the entire building, you know, the entire bottom, it seems like in the view last month, every square inch of space. There's just no wasted space in that building. And it is amazing. And I know we're all concerned four weeks ago, five weeks ago, with the weather, whether or not we'll fall behind schedule. But it certainly looks to me as if we're moving very quickly. And it's hard to tell. But quite frankly, we have a just reminded you too, by the way, we do have a central school building beginning tomorrow, Tuesday at five. That's held in the longest this morning moving to the high school. But as of right now, because we're otherwise, I heard, it says we're running behind. We're all delayed. We're right on schedule. We're on track. Okay. In fact, all the way down to Central Office has got all of the study work done. Yeah, it wasn't wallboarded on Thursday or on Thursday. One of the things that I didn't make my point earlier, but it's certainly noticeable in part film is that the amount of case work is in place.
Amazing amount of case work that's in place. And that the, you know, most of the ceilings, the grids are in. All of the pieces that have things and pictures and lights or alarm systems.
Stickers.
All of those are in place. It's just filling in.
There's some closet.
The shelves out, the shelves. Exit signs, the shelves, the cases, the cabinets are all.
I think we must have got a case on Saturday. We'll have to look at cases.
Cases, there is a lot. And I think the most startling thing is when you, with the sixth grade science labs, they are a little bit less than a high school.
A lot less, actually.
Not too much.
And they all look Main Street too. It's
Well, they look Main Street. That's one of the few negatives on our complex so far is that there's one of them that has no view, no clear view outside.
It's one of the very, maybe only the entire complex that doesn't have outside like that. But coming here. Those rooms are on that side. I agree with what you're gonna tie complex outside.
I think the thing that's gonna amaze people most, and so amaze people most, is the, what they've done with the old gym and the old cafeteria.
They use the space, but it's completely different.
We're not so sure.
It's used to be, and it's almost trying to figure out where was the light once.
And the robotics lab is huge.
Right.
It's huge. And both seventh and eighth grade classrooms are coming up. They're gonna be very
Those are just like the high schools.
Windows end of the collateral space and the light coming in and their story. Build a big, big world. And the collateral space in Monmouth. It's very Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You missed a pulse.
I just wanted to add that I think I updated the committee the prior meetings about the move of the central office operations and the Little School administration. So, last Thursday, Dr. Daley, Michael and I brought all the central office personnel up to the high school to start to think in a little bit more detail about how we need more temporary location in the summer. And it looks like right now, we are scheduled, all the central office operations are scheduled to be moved to the high school on or around June 1st. I think that's our target date right now. I'll certainly update you more upon that. Certainly, the public will be able to inform in greater detail. So they know where to go. They look for the human personnel services, or the tenants' office, or business offices. But we think right now, doing that at that time of the year will accomplish two things, really. One is by moving earlier in June with the business office to help. And given the business office and the greater opportunity to close up the fiscal year without competing with the move later in June, the fiscal year ends on June 30th. And similarly, the human personnel services, because of the summer programs again, they're in the midst of a move from the middle school to the high school too close in the end of June, it will allow them greater efficiency for summer programs. And the move of the business office and the human personnel services office just makes sense to us with the tenants' office.
These are little details that people don't see. They see the construction. They see the works going on. They say, hey, look at that. They have no idea. I mean, that's temporary spaces we have to use to move central administration, the high school administration, the school area. It's been a very, very complex and very challenging project so far as a big result.
Yes. So where will you be at the high school? Good question. So what it looks like right now, and I think you can, this is pretty firm, the business office personnel, including Michael, Dr. Daley, Anne, and Belle and I, will all be in the library. We utilize the classroom. The classroom is part of the library. The two offices behind the reception desk in the library. And then Anne and I are going to use two of the libraries that owns the library.
Correct.
The pupil personnel services are going to move to one of the teacher pods on the second floor. So on the main level, the pod in the library.
Excellent. Great.
And they will seem really pleased about the spaces. And they're in good shape to make a new school.
Any further? We gotta confirm this. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Paul's manual review for a second reading. It's Paul's achieving our high ages to best the violence leading policy. We've got previous first reading. Were there any changes? Any work that needs to be changed?
Did we have a first reading? Or did we not? I don't know.
It was tabled.
It was tabled. Right. Right. Now it's been cleared after the So what, the issue was whether or not it was paid or not paid? It is not paid, okay.
I thought we did, except that if we did the
That's right.
Yeah. That's our resolution. We got the first reading, but there was a request to go back to more clarify.
We may have to, we might have to minutes.
Check your minutes?
It's on March, March 9. I couldn't hear. Do you have March 9? Sorry. The March 9 minutes apply to that. Right. It was tabled.
Okay, so let's do this for first reading. First reading. Is there any reason to set that by the way?
No, it's ready. No.
Let's do a motion to accept a first reading and open second reading next week. So move. Okay, motion by third and second by the meeting. A further discussion. And also, please say aye. Aye, pause now. Motion carries by number four now. We have a FY 2016 budget update. And again, this is the budget that's been postponed. Thanks for listening here. So last of the time.
I think between Michael and I, so we thought, we were pleased, and I hope you were too, with public hearing on budget on April 6. And I think tonight, we included on the agenda just an opportunity for the committee to talk a little bit about what you heard, both from our presentation and also from the community. And to just, to hear from you if there's anything that you would like to see us adjust in our budget presentation calendar to the final, ultimately to the scoop in by April 27 for a budget to be done.
Comments or questions for three minutes?
My feeling is that this should be budget we present, and I know that somehow we aren't actually finance committee, I, I plan to support this budget on April 27th, even though it's still ninety-seven thousand dollars out of balance right now. We do have some potential cuts we could make, but my belief is, you know, we should wait as long as we can to see if there's any more money that's going to become available. I don't want to make cuts until money becomes available. So, my, my, my recommendation is that this is a budget that we should go on next, at our next meeting, the twenty-seven million, eight-eight-six-two-two-six budget, that's the right, right.
Correct, yes.
And that leaves us four hundred and seven thousand dollars short in terms of the revenues available.
We've identified some areas that we have, that we should, but. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, I, I thought the budget here went very well, I think it was pretty clear that we need to address the flat sides of the high school in particular, I think it's, I think what it be that we need to, we can't, we're gonna go right here with the technology advancements and requirements that we're gonna have with the building. I agree with the elements that between now and June 1st, there's been potential revision of revenues, so I don't want to cut this budget until we actually have to. So, the fact that, the twenty-seventh is, the fact that we worked with this doesn't necessarily, this is the budget we're gonna be working, tell me anyway, we have enough to, we're gonna modify it right up until, until, so, again, I'm optimistic that there will be some revision of revenues if we have, but cuts have already been done.
If need be, we can make those cuts the night, now we can absolutely afford it. I just think it's our responsibility to pass a budget that we feel requires a proper run of the primary schools. And that, I think this budget, while I would like more money, to be honest with you, because we could, we could teach that high school, we could run for one, and we could stand to now, have it in all the other places in the district, but I think that this is a reasonable budget, and I can support, I support.
I'll say this too, we have at least two more financial medicaid moves between now and town meeting, felt this Friday, and then without one in the month of May, so, so those, those means are very correct, we have a very good relationship with the board of select members of the finance committee, so we will continue to work on this right up until, until town meeting. I just want to thank the, 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 that's, that's true too, the state room, as well. But I'd like Superintendent Haddad, Mr. Frumley, and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Bailey, the words they did in the presentation was very, very good, I think the audience appreciated it, so, and that, they're pretty principled with the, with the, that's very good. And, and they all answered on each other's, the folks in the community, they, they expressed concern about the flat side of the high school. Next on the agenda, we have the 2014-2015 school committee evaluation. This is self-evaluation that we've been doing now for three years now?
I think over three years, several, yeah.
I think he started doing this, so, and, Catherine came on, Catherine Willis came on as lieutenant. It's actually worked out pretty well, we refined it a little bit, but basically, there were categories that, basically, reflect our goals, leadership and governance, educational programs, financial asset management, and family and community relations. And I know those goals are subgoals, and what we try to do is set those goals really properly here, and then evaluate ourselves on how well we've fulfilled or how we've been those. So, I think we're gonna have until the twenty-seventh, and I know Val's done a lot of work on this, and it's trying to also.
I'm gonna, Jean and I are on the same.
So Val, you wanna talk about this, go ahead.
All right. We're gonna, so everybody should plan on getting their responses to me, know later, and if you want to get to the twenty-seventh meeting, that's fine, and then goal is to present their map, the may, I think is a job.
Correct.
And hopefully, John will have the time to be able to do what Catherine's done in the past, which was to give us a three-year assessment that lines up the scores for the three years, so we can see where we improved, where we declined, and where we're gonna stay instead.
I think it's helpful, sort of, in addition to just knocking off onto a three or four, which is without doing another consideration, doing it consistently well, because I was placed there for comments, so I think you could put some comments out, just to give a little feedback to our holsters, actually, as to what, what people are thinking, if they don't think that we're doing something as, as good as we should be doing.
Well, I think one interesting thing about it is, in the past, it has had us consider some of the things we are doing as a committee, and how we should change, maybe we should change what we're doing, or maybe there are things we're doing that we shouldn't be, but maybe we're not doing things that we should be. And this has been helpful, because every year when we do this, it, it causes you to focus on the entire scope of the school, of the school, of responsibilities, and I have a whole self-assessment. Exactly, exactly. And, you know, every year, there, there are areas where we all score ourselves love, we try to work on improving those areas, some areas we're working on, and others we improve, some of it depends on budget, for example, professional development, these are things we always focus on. I think we always feel we're not doing a good enough job, and providing professional development opportunities for educators, a lot of it's budget dependent, but again, it's a good tool to use, and I think we should continue with the process. So the twenty-seventh.
Any questions?
Mr. Webster, you mentioned, including to where the goals should be.
All right. So is that our, our goals, these school pay goals, which mirror the same four categories as the self-assessment tool, leadership and governance, financial asset management, education programs, and family and community relations. So we can also look at our goals while we're, while we're looking at our self-assessments, and see, and, setting our goals for the year, we're really hoping to improve that, that's something that's very, I encourage for our years. It's probably, it's, it really is, yeah.
Okay, any comments, questions, any further?
No, I just think that the evaluation does show the strength of weakness in the committee, you know, and it might show weakness in one committee member, because, you know, they don't like the law and stuff of that nature, so, you know, it's helpful, because in over the year, it's been impressive.
So, you should be, I don't know, I go, but I'm a lot, so. All right. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's presentation of educator goals on April four, I use the chairman.
So, having recently presented my entry plan to, to the committee, and by way of that, to the public, the next step for me was, having, then had that, that period of time to, to gain some important information about the district, and to help shape a direction that I hope to, to work with all of you, to take the district to the future. I'm now, what I'd like to propose to you, as part of my educator evaluation, my goals for the year. And what I've done, the fact that you have tonight, is, in the orange, identified by the white, is, is where I feel I am, kind of, to fade, needing my goals, so I can give you kind of a little bit of a big year cycle, progress report, and what I anticipate doing at the end of cycle, which for me will be October 17th of 2015, I will give you a further update at that time. But for right now, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just give you a little discussion about each goal. Essentially, under my educator evaluation plan obligations, I am to have one professional practice role, and I've identified that as, as an, and you're all aware of my participation in the new superintendent's induction program that's overseen by the Massachusetts Association, superintendent of schools. So, that, that is going to be my first goal, as a, as a leadership development professional practice role. I'm then obligated to come up with a student learning role. So what I've chosen for that is, I, I feel fairly confident that the community and the committee, and I, and I know I can speak for the administrative council, because we were all intact when we worked on the strategic plan for the district, referring to it in our PS 2016, I feel very certainly that that plan is something that people like, it's served us well in a number of areas, particularly around budget development. So, for a strategic plan, student learning role, my, my hope is that working with the administrative team and the school community and the community, we will, we will be looking toward a new strategic plan as we come to the close with our PS 2016, we might be looking at the craft when we say our PS 2021. And then my, my third obligation is to come up with between two and four district-wide goals. So what I, that is I've identified three. The first is the entry plan, and bring that to the next level. So now that I've had the time over the last, say, six months to, to craft my entry plan, I want to take that information and use that to, to, again, continue strategic planning, look at the areas that are in need of further retention, and use that to be my first of three district-wide goals. And again, I just want to call your attention to, to the, to the orange column on the white, these are some of the activities that have taken place up to this point that are helping me achieve those goals. The second of three district-wide goals is in the area of communication. Fortunately, I, I believe I follow the superintendent, he's very good communicator with the constituencies across the community, teachers, students, staff, and the community as a whole. But I have identified a few things that I do a little differently, or maybe an addition, and I think that they're important, and they have done, they have, I think, some great value in keeping, in keeping the form of what goes on in the school district, things like a Twitter page. I continue to host PS 2016, in fact, I'm taking a third show tomorrow, as a matter of fact. I've introduced superintendent's news, that I've sent out two editions of that, so things like that, I'm hoping will be, will be beneficial to us, fulfilling our mission as a school district. So effective communication has become my second of three district-wide goals. And then the third and final district-wide goal is, is to the building project, and, you know, as, as you all know, it is, it is something that, that requires a great deal of power tension, and so it seemed, it seemed both smart, and it seemed, I think, achieving a level of efficiency in terms of district management, I've identified the third goal as, as working to ensure that the new unbreakable middle school opens in a condition that's ready to receive students for September, something that's very, very important. So, I've identified for you a few things that have been going on at this point, leading up to what I know is going to be another great celebration for this reunion, to open the new unbreakable middle school in September of 2015. So with that said, when I met with Mr. Biano and Mr. Webster on last Thursday, as an evaluation subcommittee meeting, it was, it was some need for me to find clarification about what it would mean for, for my annual evaluation cycle as a superintendent, you do not start the traditional July-one start date, and I was able to confirm, in fact, I know that for factors, superintendents in Massachusetts that have started in the last month, we work on an annual cycle, it's not a July-one to June-thirtieth period, so, I, I got the feeling from Mr. Webster and Mr. Biano the other day that we would be okay with adopting the cycle as a, as an October 17th, 2015, to October 16th, say, 2016, and that would be my year, and so on.
Yeah, that works, that makes sense.
It makes sense to do, I felt it makes sense to do eight months.
Now, you're silent, wait.
I'm concerned that the timing could be good or bad, and it falls in a pretty good, you know, the start is already that, well, and then the holidays have to start, so it falls in a pretty, you know.
Good. Agreed, agreed. Any more questions or comments, just, yeah.
Just the, the one thing, and, you know, it's your goal, and your plan, your goal, your, but one thing on communications, and you mentioned Twitter here, I think one thing we need to figure out is to promote your Twitter accounts, so parents can, who are on Twitter can follow you, and see what you're posting there, I follow you. And then the other thing is.
I topped five hundred followers this week.
Really?
I did.
I topped five hundred this week. I don't know, right, but I have.
Oh, I'm true, almost seventy.
I'm pretty far from that. The other thing is, along the same lines as this, and I know that the policy subcommittee is in the throes of working on a new social media policy. There's more, you know, putting Jerry aside for a second, social media is kind of a huge communication platform, not just anywhere, but, you know, Facebook, LinkedIn, for, for professionals, and there's others, I don't think you should do it, right now, Snapchat, for example, or something, but, but it's just a plethora of these tools, and that's where our kids are, whether or not they're not, that's where they are, they're on these platforms. And, and I think ways of taking advantage of these platforms to communicate with students and parents is something that should be, you know, considered and told. What's up?
Good. Thank you, good.
Thank you. Thanks, Ron.
Now, we have, we have, we have just some meeting minutes to, to approve here, so we'll start at the line of nine, 2015 executive session minutes. I believe we accept March nine, 2015 executive session minutes. Motion by Mel, second by me, no further discussion, also, please say aye, 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 pose none, motion carried, four and none. March 23rd, 2015 executive session minutes, two concessions, three, 2015 executive session minutes. Motion by Mel, second by me, no further discussion, also, please say aye, 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 pose none, motion carried, four and none. March 31st, 2015 open session minutes, that's the second workshop, that would be March 31st, 2015 open session, budget workshop minutes. Motion by Mel, second by me, no further discussion, also, please say aye, 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 pose none, motion carried, four and none. April 6th, 2016 executive session minutes. April 6th, 2015 executive session minutes. Motion by Mel, second by me, no further discussion, also, please say aye, 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 pose none, motion carried, four and none. April 31st, 2015 open session minutes, that's the second workshop, that would be March 31st, 2015 open session, budget workshop minutes. Motion by Mel, second by me, no further discussion, also, please say aye, 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 pose none, motion carried, four and none. April 6th, 2015 executive session minutes. April 6th, 2015 executive session minutes. Okay, motion by Mel, second by me, also, please say aye, 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 pose none, motion carried, four and none. Okay, three in favor, no further discussion, one in session. And April 6th, 2015 open session. April 6th, 2015 open session. Motion by Mel, second by me, no further discussion, also, please say aye, 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 pose none, motion carried, four and none. Okay, we have a budget update, regarding its operations, I was going to give an update on the school, the current school, budget, and also, the president brought information against the school about FY 2015, my vote for justice.
Great, thank you. So, the equal budget update, more, including in this week's package, again, as of practice, the floor is broken down by expenses and payroll. Again, in the charge of expenses due to budget ranges, as you can see by the report, there continues to be funds available in outside of transportation, tuition, tuitions and transportation. This is again, the result of a reduction in the number of forecasted students that required outside placements and transportation that was projected during last, during the budget season, last spring. Looking at utility costs, the district continues to monitor our utility costs closely, as you're well aware, it is an extremely cold winter season, the cost for gas, as a result, has been much higher than the typical winter season, the average temperatures in January and February are certainly above normal limits. So as reflected in the report, however, the projected cost of utilities will remain in budget, budget increases. So we're happy to report that despite the cold winter season, and despite addressing the volatility and uncertainty of new high school this year, electricity, gas, we will be able to stay within our budget of all utilities, and there will be some available funds in this area to repurpose at the end, at the end of the year. As has been reported in the past, we definitely incur additional snow removal costs, certainly the bulk of it was anticipated, this was done to protect the safety of students and staff, meaning, cost of snow removal services off roofs and elsewhere are certainly expensive, so as a result, and as reflected in the report, the district's grounds and pavements, contract returns, lawn acres, have been reflected in the debt. We certainly pay close attention to the roof service program this year, and we continue to evaluate the program's success. I'm happy to report that the month of March yielded a profit to the district, this is a result of daily sales, participation continuing to be up, that really grew up this school year. The district anticipated loss at this point in the year through the month of March is thirty thousand dollars plus than it was at this time last year, so it's, again, continue to see some positive news, some news that was released statewide as well, as they start to, the state's starting to release, USDA is starting to release some of the strict restrictions on out-of-car sales and providing some great levels of flexibility for, I'm sorry, units, that they had come up with that in 2011, in the past, they're healthy, come react in 2011. So that certainly caused some news that could help with certain. for, I'm sorry, onions, that they had come up with back in 2011, in the past, their healthy , how react in 2011. So that is certainly positive news that can help with certain of the district's programs program. On the payroll side, the administration line is reflecting a surplus as a result of administrator turnover and agency that occurred this year. As reported in past, the technology technician line is reflecting, there's a very slight deficit in this line item, this is a result of some additional support for a variety of tasks that was needed this year in the technology department. The store line is reflecting a deficit that's a result of the study that we hired back in October of 2014, this fiscal year. It's also a result of the extensive snowstorms and snow inflammation that we've had this winter season, continued to curse additional snowstorm type costs, starting with months to address the snowing cost as well. We continue to see a need to appoint long-term substitutes to fill extended due to absences, but I just anticipated at this point in the year that we will be able to budget substitute line items to address these needs to fill long-term due to absences. So I'm happy to report that despite the anticipated costs we incurred this year, it really driven back the actual order in the winter season, I do feel that we remain in solid financial standing as we enter the final quarter of this year. So any questions on the budget report going trying to move the disposition of course? Any questions?
Hey.
Great, thank you very much. So as promised, and we have been working on for the last couple of years really, you know, much better job tracking the various gifts and information that we receive into the district, certainly have put into policies in place that help us better track and account for the various donations and gifts that we receive on an annual basis. So what is included in this week's packet is a detailed breakdown of all the gift donations that the school department has received, the school committee has accepted in that over the last two fiscal years. It's not surprising that the amount is substantial, the amount currently totals over 68,000 in fiscal year 2015 to date and over 62,000 during fiscal year 2014. This is a grand two-year total of an amount of 131,671 dollars and seven cents for the last two years and through really March to date of this coming fiscal year. These donations have helped support expenses such as various athletic team expenses, fitness equipment for our programs, transportation expenses for class field trips and student activities, various scholarships, high school rental time, school planners and various technology equipment like notebooks, iPads, smart boards, just to name some of the items listed on the two spreadsheets. So I think it's almost an understatement to say how much the school department greatly appreciates the general support of the various donors listed on the four spreadsheets. So with that being said, I'm certainly going to turn it over to the committee.
Thanks, Michael. Any comments or questions regarding the board?
Yeah, he did one of the drawing practice that I just know firsthand as well, he confessed that there's a large amount that's probably not on here because it's not something that goes through the school department, like enrichment programs that they have, like that animal people come in and show the reptiles and all that, it's a direct check from the VA to that enrichment program. So it would be interesting to see at the end of the year, we could get, you know, from all of the different ones, you know, that high school has, have been increasing agents to find out what additional on top of what we see come through that they do towards.
Absolutely. Good point, good point.
We spoke about that this morning, as a matter of fact, based on the conversation that we had last week, Michael and I spoke this morning about that. We, we think that that number is significant too, and so we talked about how we might solicit that information from the various groups, say at the end of this year, I think we can anticipate we'll come back and some additional information. I would predict that that be a sizable amount.
I have to say that the amount that Michael had in the report, I don't know if it's quite expected. It makes seem to what I thought of, although the last several months we've seen sizable donations from parent organizations, youth support clubs, and obviously we have, cover something to do whatever they can, so, because it's made a big difference, we won't worry if, you know, further parts, and a lot of that, you know.
Yeah, I just, I think a lot of these go toward enrichment programs that are outside curriculum and those are great. The wondering, I was interested in seeing this, is just to get a handle on things that outsideers, DOs, parents, other groups are paying for, that when it comes right down to it, the school system should be paying for that. Things like smart boards and projectors, fitness equipment, iPads, even things like tracking uniforms, hard supplies, more white boards, support for the physical ed program, Chromebooks, and on more physical ed equipment, classroom smart boards, those are things that we should be paying for, right?
Add that to the piece that we collect.
Correct.
You get a good idea of a number that we're charging people in the community, above beyond what our operating budget is.
Right. And it's not out of hand, and I don't think we're able to put it out in the model at this point, that's a problem.
I just don't want to make goals.
Yes, but it, but, you know, it's wonderful that we put DDo's toward donating a large amount by a large number of smart boards, but in the long run, that's something that we should do.
When we put those parents on, they pay taxes.
Exactly.
Or just supporting, covering.
Correct.
And we need to get that into what it is.
The generosity comes sometimes.
Because, don't happen until we get more and put some, thank you. Okay, Michael, thank you. Good job, thanks for your job, thank you. Next to the generators, a staff updated superintendent, we got a director of personnel services, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm happy to tell you that we conducted site visits for our two finalists candidates for the director of personnel services, the second or two last Wednesday, Owen Fitchberg, and I am anticipating, kind of doing a reference checks right now, I'm anticipating however, bringing a candidate to you in April 27th with a recommendation.
Excellent. I'm not going to say it's about time, but it's good to be, we'll recall it. I think you need to be a target, we need to, you want to express the interest in your career before you get it explored. I kind of flip flopped a little bit with Mel, but I said, you know, I'm satisfied that they haven't seen a candidate recall, but I would go along with that, I don't, you know, express it. I mean, I know it's been a process and it was a bit of a debate, so I just, like I said, my feeling is that this position is similar to the director of finance and operations superintendent that I've got to position the school committee actually votes on as opposed to the superintendent control, the person that got the most to promote, so, but I'm satisfied with the process and satisfied with John's judgment, Patrick's judgment, the person I recognize.
I know, but I think that's a judgment, and you should have...
Well, I'm trying to get my support, isn't it? Yes.
Right, and I guess, you know, we'll get it through this. I had the opportunity to go sit in on some of the things, so I've been able to meet them to a bit.
I just wanted, I guess you want our, the same thing.
Right. I mean, I'd like to see them both, but, you know, you said, you guys are, like, part of the ones that would make their choice, you know, education wise, the case that would be more efficient, and you need to work with the other industries.
And if this person doesn't work out, then you have one else.
That's right.
And Mr. Bowles was, I don't know, representing, also, the person that's, okay? I could report, thank you. Subcommittee reports, we have a number of them, so we will, we have the athletic subcommittee which spent on March 24, knowledge of some notes on...
I don't know.
Okay, we talked about a number of things. One of them, being banned is to be displayed as a new facility, middle school, high school, that the flag of Ash championships for athletic competitions as well as potential championship on the routes, we're talking about how would, how would do that, and we had to put the ban as, in fact, the ball, maybe on Main Street, inside which amazed him, I think we're going to talk about that again, basically.
I can just tell you, pretty good, Jerry, that Dan Johnson asked, came some more detailed information on the size and the cost, and it's for me to present it.
All right. I know I had some ideas, but, all right, that's good. Talking about batting cages, that's been an issue that's been ongoing, and if you don't know it, the current middle school, which is the old high school, has down bottles in the basement, batting cage complex down there that's been used for many, many years. Coach Frank Carey put it in, it's been used by both the baseball team and softball team. This year in particular, with the bad weather, it was actually necessary to have a facility like that available. Mel, I don't know, working in high school, and in the, amazing, they actually had a little bit of motorized batting cage that came, comes out from the ceiling, so the softball and baseball can play music. We've been talking about trying to get private funds to bring something of that nature. Next year, it's not going to be, so it's something we're talking about. The student is pricing on that, right? Surprising, and also Martin Tilden and Dave Johnson were really on the potential in the last week, they got, but still I didn't expect them to allow that.
The other pricing is a lot less than we expected, the inflation that we had.
Spring sports centers, stage for our 330 schools that signed up there as much as 24, so approximately 42% of the total high school population is playing our spring sport. We got looking at the facility rental fee schedule, we got looked at the expedient of the athletic subcommittee for the purposes of adjusting potentially the fees for the athletic facilities at the high school, and actually use to open the high school, but we have athletic facilities. For next year, because we think that the facilities we're offering now may warrant us to adjust the fees, we're going to try to get a lot to what we're going to say. Also, it's good for me to rest and talk, talking about all the facilities. The turf field issue is still something that we're looking at for the practice field. The team building looks like we should take the team building down by the football field beyond 20,000, the issue should go aside with the start of football season, start of ball sports. It's a real massive basketball coaching, ready to see it's been posted, I'm waiting for applications for that, and that's pretty much it, the expedient 28. I don't have anything else. Knocking aboard a correctors meeting, Mel.
Hi, can I have a little thing to report? I can get in.
Okay. Very nice. Minions planning team met on March 27, 2015, look, and John and Michael and I were there, basically discussed budgets, particularly our budget, and we basically did a presentation for the minions planning team. At that meeting, we were there for almost three hours, we worked over the revenues that were available, we did come up with additional revenues, and we did reduce our budget deficit as a result of additional revenues that we were able to come up with at that meeting. I hope John and Michael might add anything to that.
I think just again, I'd like to, you know, publicly state my appreciation for the whole dynamic that exists with the finance, collaboration, and the spirit drives you to maximize the use of resources and to work with the school committee and the school administrations to bring as much revenue as possible to fund the things that we think we need to run the school district, is very much appreciated by me as the superintendent. Everybody has a participatory role, and I think really, we're all trying to accomplish the same thing, it's about recognizing that resources are limited and trying to structure that balance, so.
It's actually, you know, it's a very unique situation that we have, and other communities don't have that. And if you look at the list or comments on the case, you'll find that other communities, other districts have a lot of problems and are dealing with, you know, build on.
Yeah, well, I tell you, it's, that could be behind both roads because it's, we're back and forth pretty good, and we come out basically with the consensus of go ahead.
Well, so the reason you expect, the reason I keep that in mind, because it only had a maximum two members of every community involved, so it does not have to be a public meeting.
It can square a public meeting.
Correct.
It's an agenda, but it's not important.
Right.
As John says, it's very, actually. The secondary school building, we've already talked about it from that of March 24, we can, like, tomorrow, we can get by 30, and, you know, again, hopefully everything is going to be good news, but the progress that's being made is substantial, you can see it, and it's getting exciting now, it's been dry, it's been finding things that everybody knows, to construct, it's supposed to be done by the end of August, it's supposed to solve at school, there on September 9, demolition work is supposed to start at 2:30, we need to after work, they have current physical field of high school, demolition work, obviously demolishing the old high school building as well as putting in the practice field, the softball complex, the hockey, lots and lots of professional landscaping. We still have a, we still have a punch list for the, for the high school building and the aircon facilities, that's being addressed, so that's been forward. I mentioned that letter was the transfer last day, we didn't get it from, from outside. I'm not sure what happened, I think John was there, I wasn't, I think the list was not, maybe it was slightly, but for the most part, I think it almost started with the warm season, and that building, they have just superb.
I went to the Alton Forest, it was not, like, I love it, I don't think, I know it's huge, if you'd like.
Absolutely, because, you know, I do think, you know, in all fairness, the gentleman who elected to transfer it down to Attar Point, I just had a performance, it was, it was nothing, I don't believe it was any mechanical, it's more, we're still, you know, folks are still trying to find out how to, how to adjust things properly, maximize what it is, there's so many wonderful...
These jokes all go, yeah, it was, it was slightly problematic, but I think people took it in a good, in a good natured way, and I thought Mr. Foreman did a very good job, he directed a very nice job, and the performance did begin expressing on behalf of the school, not to the community, and hundreds of people that were there, the appreciation for the beautiful facility, I think, I think he did a very nice job.
But, you know, we all, we, there may be some points made, but the letter was, it was unnecessary, there are other ways to envelop that, and quite frankly, it's a new beginning, but obviously we have an action plan, I don't know. But overall, the long term solution...
Outstanding.
Outstanding.
It's an extreme, the whole complex is an extremely complex package, and that goes for every element of the technology, the heating and ventilating system, the complexity of it is very high, but it's also highly efficient, and when we're all, when we're done, we learn how to use it. I think, you know, I look at it a little bit like, I have a 1945 Model P, and it's...
That's a yours, that would ask.
Not that, but close, but it's a very, very simple machine, very simple. And then I go up and got a map, look at the BMW, which has, every element of it has a circuit board associated with it. Something as simple as the brake lights, which, which, T doesn't have a brake light, doesn't have brake lights, almost doesn't have brakes, but it, it has, you know, like, a little sensor in there that senses what position the brake pedal is in, and that all is, is the complexity of the machine. You can't add anything to it, you can't put a radar detector in it without screwing up the tire. It's very complex, but it keeps on going and going and going, it's very efficient, and it's actually a lot more fun to drive that Model P. So with the old, the old school was the Model P, the new school is the, we have a lot of people driving a lot of cars.
Sorry, I was going to add...
Complexes, they're complex, it's not simple, it's strange, like, so...
I think you both made the right comment, and, you know, we probably should have been a little bit clearer on the subject here, is that even though the high school is open, it's still really construction, it's all ahead of time, there's a lot of discussion last week, parents unhappy with the traffic, and I can tell you that also took a long time to get out of there after the op course, and I, part of that is because we don't have the, the final traffic pattern in place yet, and the final pedestrian walkway in place yet, and, and so it's going to take more time. Now, if we get everything in place next year, and after a couple of weeks or a month is still problems, then we'll have an issue, but, I guess, I think that's the thing, if you don't understand, the training, I know a lot of our staff still hasn't been trained yet, because one of the issues is there hasn't been as much focus on high school as there's been on getting middle school done, and so some of the things, and this has been very hard, but a punch list, which I will be at Monday, but I hope we, we stay on top of some of these things, because we need to get the audio visual equipment in all areas of work before, like, we need everyone trained, and we need to get things like the furniture, the atrium, we need to get that in there, and other things, we need to straighten those things up, and I know, I know what means are meaning, every... things up, and I know, I know what we need every week, every two weeks, and we calm on it, and I know we'll keep doing that, but we need to get, we need to get some results.
But again, I, I don't want to sound offensive, but people have to understand that over a three-year period, four to three years, we've had fourteen hundred and seventy students, almost two hundred faculty and staff on that site, while we're doing the construction, all the work, and if the parking space is shot, because we've got an infrastructure project on there, we have people that are parked in there, that's for construction purposes, there's so many, that's, it's, there's been a little bit of need, we've got to share videos, practices, because that, but I'm telling you that it's going a lot of the way we grow, and we're looking forward to, to the, to the, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, this is going to make it, I learned late this afternoon, the furniture for the student comps is being delivered at seven-thirty tomorrow.
Oh, I haven't seen it before, I mean, I'd like it.
That was the...
I'm back here, I'm back here, four o'clock today.
Lot of user leaving available.
I think it's coming from within the...
Yeah, so, I'm gonna be there tomorrow.
You're gonna be there at seven-thirty tomorrow.
I'm obviously at it.
Oh, that's just fine. Yeah, I was expecting later, but, you know, no, I took an opportunity to go to the high school, we spent about three hours there, we went through there, and I think I want to tell you that the facility we have, the features that we have, and I think also, the way it was planned, that the government administration serves a lot of credit, because I think that they cooperated with how they wanted it set up, you know, the athletic department by us, and it's just, it's all the way that people draw on, draws on this, so.
I just, mentioning the middle school, people wouldn't even start getting excited about that, because it's almost been quick in the background, although it kind of marvels that high school, but that middle school is going to be beautiful. I mean, I was, I was absolutely blown away by the space I was in there, and I can't, I just can't get away from it, it's going to be awesome.
Okay, we're on policies, we're going to be met on April second, that's Janine and Cliff, what else to report beyond the policies that we talked about?
I think just, our focus right now is on social media.
Social media, okay. And that's, that's a working part of us, I think, I think a lot of it's a big, yeah. Okay, evaluation subcommittee, we always, we talked about the evaluation process, Cliff. We're on future schedule, the athletic subcommittee is scheduled for April twenty-eighth at twelve-thirty PM, that's in the superintendent's office, secondary school building committee meeting tomorrow, April fourteenth at five-thirty, that's in the Mont Business Learning Lab. Finance planning meeting is April seventeenth at eight AM at the Town Hall. I'll give the board directors meeting April twenty-third at seventeen PM, and that's Hotel at that, at the David Tab, and again, the secondary school building committee meeting tomorrow, April twenty-eighth as well. I'm just ready to report.
Yes, so I do have a couple of things to share with you, in my report, you all have a bottom. The first is that the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is hosting its annual date on the Hill event on April twenty-ninth, the registration is open presently. Dr. Dandy and I are planning on attending. If any of you is, is interested in attending, and you want to tag along with us, please let us know. Okay. Okay, and if not, I'm certainly, you know, pretty local in that, too, I think. I thought, you know, given Mr. Kourichechechka, which is involved in a lot of things in town, also, as chiefly as the, as the chairman of the secondary school building committee, as well as the author of the fire that's being honored at the Red and authoring Chamber of Commerce in the Year Awards Dinner, that's Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, which is fine. If any of you is interested in attending, sort of let me know, I can, I can point you in the direction of your ticket, if you want to. I think it's a nice way to recognize Jack for a significant amount of work that's done not only in the secondary school building committee, but just as a general citizens. And then the last thing, I had forwarded to you tomorrow an email, but I think, I just wanted to bring it back to focus, and also for the benefit of Anne and the transcript and the whole cable, that you'll, you'll no doubt recall in February, you've endorsed the state of interest for the roof project on this building, on the old school. I was very pleased to learn that the MSBA has contacted me, and they'd like to come out and tour the facility, so there is a, a, Julie Seibel from the MSBA that will be coming out on May fifth, it's at two-thirty. If you are available and want to attend, to do the walk-through with her, to, to Wayne Howard, and Michael, will you join me, because they are the ones that work with me on filing the state of interest. We can certainly provide you a report, you know, I'll certainly just drop you, and I can invite Michael Gilberro as well, but I think, so.
We'll meet here.
We will meet here, and basically, Joe, Miss Seibel, or she needs to say hello. I, I'm hoping not. And I don't think we know, so.
I have a question on that, does that work the same way as the project, you get a percentage as it's set upon, Mike?
No, it's a percentage. The way I understand it is, it's not as formulated as it is said for the project, and our engagement now, it's based more on there. This is under that accelerated program, if you remember, carrying two hundred and fifty thousand, and we just, we met that criteria. I don't, I don't know what her request to do a site visit means, I don't know if that mission would be overly excited about that or not, but right now, I'm thinking back to when Catherine Brady came out, and we took her to the old high school, and just showed her some of the deficiencies, so I'm kind of putting it on top of that.
Maybe it's going to be a rainy day.
Yes, some of it is, some light, some distance, or some...
That was a better option, so.
Yeah, right. And that's all I'm saying, on my report.
And, uh, so, Mr....
I did, so I, I get recalled a request from the school committee, when I, as the high school principal, presented my, my athletic school council, my school improvement plan, and I recall that there was a desire for the committee to get kind of a mid-year progress, I don't know that this is quite mid-year, it's a little later than that, but I asked each of the principals to just give me a little summary report on where they were, with the work of their school councils, and, and meeting the goals of their current school improvement plan, so I think they did a nice job, two of the five principals, putting something together, and buying into one goal, I think.
Very good.
Just to kind of keep you up to date on, on the work of your, your, as a council.
Okay, thank you, John.
Future schedule, April fifteenth at seven PM is our, again, open air budget presentation of author of the finance, and that's, uh, myself, anybody else who wants to do it, I'm playing. Okay. And then on April twenty-seventh, seven o'clock, we have our meeting, which is kind of going forward on the two thousand and sixteen budget, that's at the author of the high school business learning lab, and again, on May eleventh, seven PM, we got four of their school buildings, and we give the J team, and Turner, put school presentation, and something, I mean, any further, please?
Okay, something further, uh, any motions to return? Motion by Cliff? Second, if I can, and all the others that, I, I vote, I'm saying, very well.